Call this meeting to order, please silence your electronic devices so we can conduct our meeting and stand for the invocation given by a council member Twitchell. Please join me in reciting the Lord's Prayer. Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy keepings come, thy will be done on earth as it is in heaven. Give us to stay our daily breath, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us. The silent temptation of the liberal庶民. Now I'm reciting the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Public comments? House speakers should have signed up in advance with the city clerk. Each speaker will please use the podium, state your name and address before giving your statement. Each speaker will be limited to five minutes. Please address your comments to the chair. Council will not engage in debate with the speaker. On the first pile, that means you have thirty seconds left. On the second pile, you'll be, time will be up and we'll stop.
John Roach?
John Roach, one sixteen grand new terrace. I'd like to encourage the council tonight to vote for the change in the residency code. It's obvious that the city has a problem attracting real good candidates. They're out there, but they don't want to move this close to Batavia. I think the idea of changing it for everybody but the fire department, the manager, of course, the clerk, is a great idea. Expand the area. Times have changed. Let's face it, we don't pay as much as a lot of other places and we can't afford to shut off anybody that really wants to work for the city of Batavia. Please vote for the change. Thank you.
Council response? We're not voting for it today. Today's a conference meeting, so something to keep in mind for the business meeting. Communications? Now, there was one added, I'm told, "Everybody eats" was added to the top of the list.
Yep. So I'll do that one first. Everybody Eats Genesee County Spartans requesting to use the city center concourse tomorrow and Thursday, four thirty to seven thirty PM. This would be for contract signing and photo shoots.
Any concerns on that? Continue, please.
Kiwanis Club is looking to hold their annual Easter egg hunt on Saturday, April nineteenth, at nine AM in Centennial Park.
Any concerns? Okay, next.
Eli Fish submitted an application for their anniversary party and great fish race on Saturday, May third, in Jackson Square from two to four PM.
Questions, concerns? Okay, continue.
New York State School for the Blind is participating in Special Olympics and is requesting assistance with a walk to Vendetta Stadium on Thursday, May twenty-second at nine AM.
Questions? Continue.
All Babies Cherished submitted a request for a 5K on Saturday, June seventh. From eight AM to twelve PM, this would start and end at three fifty Bank Street going throughout city streets.
Questions? Can we continue on?
Kiwanis Club also submitted an application for a 5K road race on Friday, July fourth, starting and ending at Centennial Park throughout city streets from nine to eleven AM.
Continue.
Glow YMCA submitted their application for their annual corporate cup on Thursday, August seventh, at six PM throughout city streets, starting and ending in Centennial Park.
Any questions on that? Okay, continue on.
And the last one is the Alzheimer's Association submitted their application for a walk on Saturday, October fourth, eight AM to two PM, starting and ending also in Centennial Park.
Any questions on that? I see a lot are starting to pile up. This is the time to get them in because we have to have time to get it on a council and have the approvals done, make sure everything's in order. So if you're considering having an event this year, please try to get in as soon as possible so that you don't run out of time and then we're trying to accommodate and miss a council meeting and not be able to get your thing approved. So please get that in. The next city council meeting will be held Monday, April fourteenth, twenty twenty-five, seven PM at the City Hall Council Boardroom, second floor, city center. And Mr. Baikowski, he wanted to talk to us about the parade.
Yes, anyone want to volunteer for help with the parade this year? Please get ahold of me and we'll start the work on it now. We're already getting inquiries about people signing up, so.
This is the Memorial Day Parade.
Yeah, it's a lot of work and a lot of time considering a lot of calling people and recalling them and calling them back and calling them again, so. Anyone wants to volunteer, please let me know.
Yeah, if you want to help out, it's a good cause, so. More the merrier. Thank you, Bob.
Thank you.
The K-9 grant.
Thank you, Council President, members of council. As discussed during the fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six budget talks, the City of Batavia Police Department will be seeking a second K-9 for the force. The grant we used to acquire Batu from the Department of Homeland Security is no longer available. However, the police department found another grant from the Stanton Foundation that they would like permission to apply for to support the acquisition of a second K-9 patrol. Grant is non-competitive and offered on a rolling basis, and just so you're aware, Batu is coming up on seven years of service this year.
How long is the service for a dog?
Chief isn't here. He apologized, he's traveling to Albany tonight, but I'm gonna guess ten years would probably be max.
It's on the high end.
And.
Right about now, seven to ten is when you start want to think about getting a.
Yep, and we'd like to stagger, so we always have a K-9 patrol unit in the city.
How many years do they put in for retirement?
Yeah. They have to be, yeah. I believe owners can purchase for a dollar the K-9 to live their lives happily in their home after they're done being working dogs, and a lot of them do so.
It's usually, I'm sure you've heard about it, older, when shepherd, shepherd mixes get older, then their pets start acting up.
Yep.
It's a sad part.
It's like, it's like any animal, they, they're put through a lot of training and a lot of exercise, and so they have a finite period of time, so it's unfortunate, but hopefully it'll live a long life and you can start with a second out.
Yep.
So are we in consensus to move that to a future business meeting for a vote?
Yes.
Yes.
Make it move. Burn Jag Grant?
Thank you, Council President. For Burn Jag Grant, the city police department has been successful in the past in applying for this grant, and they continue to find new and innovative ways to save the taxpayer money while still having the best equipment and personnel they possibly can have to serve our residents. They would like to apply for multiple vehicles this year, including four fully outfitted marked patrol vehicles, replacing three high mileage vehicles, one vehicle for K-9 use, and six unmarked detective vehicles. So again, this is a grant, it usually provides us with different types of equipment, and this year they're allowed to apply for vehicles, so they'd like to go ahead with your approval and do so.
Questions or concerns on that? So are we in consensus to move that to a future business meeting for a vote?
Yes.
Let's move. Supervisor position, Bureau Maintenance?
Yes, thank you, Council President. As you're aware, in accordance with the City Batavia Strategic Plan, we've been looking to make succession planning in the city something that we embrace and do often, and to that end, and with council's blessing and approval, we have a supervisor in the Bureau of Maintenance that will be retiring in January of twenty twenty-six. We're seeking permission to hire a supervisor to train and overlap in that position for six to eight months, and also we do have some internal candidates, so there could be an internal position open that this person might leave. We'd want to fill that as well, so we remain fully staffed. We anticipate the cost of the succession planning and overlapping is thirty-five thousand dollars. Gabby, if you have anything to add to that?
I'd just like to reiterate what a great plan I think this is to do succession planning like this. It really gives the opportunity for the longstanding employee's knowledge to be cast out to the new employee. It also gives the new employee a better chance of being successful in that position, and it builds morale when you promote them within and are able to do this, so I think it's a great idea.
I will say off the cuff, the individual who will be retiring's wife came up to me Friday night and said, "You guys are the best. I can't believe you're doing that." It takes so much pressure off her husband having to possibly have someone train with him, so he doesn't feel like he's, that all that knowledge is lost and he can spend time giving it to someone. So I thought that was a very nice comment. That outsiders are even noticing that in the city we're doing this to make sure managers have the skills they need to be effective in their position.
Any other questions or concerns? So are we in consensus to move that to the business meeting? Let's move. Reclassification of clerks to discovery clerk?
Yes, thank you, Council President. Two current clerk typists that work in the City Batavia Police Department requested that the city and civil service review their job classification, as they have been doing work that they felt more aligned with the position of discovery clerk. Upon a desk audit performed by Gabby and a review by civil service, it was determined that they are doing work that is classified as a discovery clerk on a day-to-day basis on behalf of the police department. At this point, and in consultation with our HR director, we recommend that the city council abolish the two positions of clerk typist and create two positions of discovery clerk. These positions would be placed into grade two A of the current CSEA salary schedule, and we would also recommend a budget amendment for eleven thousand and thirty-three dollars to cover the increased cost of those positions over the entire year.
Questions or concerns on that? Sir, I have a question.
Rachel, is this, is there a process that goes through the file with civil service and then the civil service gets through it, looks like? It's kind of totally out of our hands, actually.
Sure, yeah, it is, and every employee that's in a civil service title has the opportunity to look at their title and make sure it best represents and fits their job, and I'll let Gabby weigh in on that as well.
Sure. So the way this one came about is Genesee County had created a discovery clerk, and these two employees recognized that was the work that they were doing as well. They brought it to Chief Highbush's attention, and he agrees with that, so we did do the desk audit, and we did find that they are doing the work of a discovery clerk. The discovery clerk work has been expanded because of laws that were passed in two thousand and nineteen, so they really are working at that level, and civil service has already determined that that will be the title. So that really the only option that we have is if we don't want to change the title to discovery clerk, we need to take that work away from them, and Chief Highbush has shared that that would be a large hurdle for him to overcome, because he really doesn't have anyone else to do that.
Any other questions or concerns? So are we in consensus to move that to a future business meeting?
Yes. Yes.
Residency requirements?
I'm gonna pass this over to Eric, who has been working with the departments for the last few months, coming up with the proposal for your review, and just a reminder, tonight you're just moving a resolution to business to then set a public hearing at a future date.
Thank you, Rachel. Council President, members of council, per the instructions of council a couple months ago, we formulated a small committee, mostly department heads, to review the current residency requirements for the city and make recommendations for changes to that. We went back and forth many, many times. We spoke to multiple staff people in regards to this, and really at the end of the day, it comes down to two simple things. Number one, as, as the local law currently reads, the residency requirement requires you to reside in a adjacent town to the county of Genesee. So if your town touches Genesee, you can, doesn't matter. The proposal change that we're, we're looking to make is to make it any adjacent county. So there's seven adjacent counties to Genesee County, and it would allow us to recruit out of any of those counties to bring folks here to hopefully at some point in time, move here and live here and do all that great stuff, but at least help fill out our police force, our DPW, and other places. The second change is not actually a change at all, it's gonna stay the same, but after reviewing this with the fire department, with Chief Graham and his, and his captains, it was determined that it would be extremely difficult for the fire department to get the people they need to respond if there was a large fire, which we've seen just in the past few months. In fact, they blame me for that because I brought it up during the, during the talks that we haven't had one in a while. We can have later, we had a large fire over, over off of Harvester, but it would make it difficult for them to be recalled for those, so in the case of the fire department, the local law would remain to be any adjacent town. So when you read the actual local law, the only change is changing the word town to county, and then there's a, there's a eighth piece to that law that separates out the fire department. City manager, city clerk will still remain, meaning to be residents of the city, and everything else will do the change if they're, I believe, will just copy that as a faculty, if not, we will provide it for even for the public hearing. But all we're asking today is that you advance that to a public hearing on April twenty-eighth, which is the next scheduled conference.
So this will get moved to the business meeting, the scheduled public hearing, and that'll be the future business meeting you dropped on my.
Yep, correct, the fourteenth.
So the fourteenth is business, and that's the scheduled hearing?
And then the hearing will be on the following April meeting.
So, any questions or concerns on that at this point? So we're still at the early end of the process, but this is starting it, and this will move
it out to final vote in a few meetings. Okay, that gets moved. Bank Street Streetscape project.
Yes, thank you, Council President. As many of you are aware, the city was awarded a TAP grant to make improvements along Bank Street from Washington to Maine. After public input, design and engineering, the project has been bid. The lowest bidder was Keeler Construction. The TAP grant will pay nine hundred and forty-five thousand dollars roughly, and the city can use CHIPS money for the remainder of the project for five hundred and forty-eight thousand dollars. The split of that is about three hundred and seventy-one thousand dollars of engineering, one point one two million of construction. This is a bit higher than what we were anticipating when we got the estimates for the project three and a half years ago, so we will be using more CHIPS funding than we originally anticipated, but Tom and Scott have looked at the budget and feel like we can handle that match. We really don't want to delay this project in any way because with the police station finishing up, the YMCA finished, we want to get in there and do that sidewalk Streetscape project to kind of finish that block up. So we are recommending to move this forward for the award.
Question? I mean, do we have a final plan or is this just gonna look like? Can we, can I get a copy of it at some point? I mean, I know this time we were talking about it, it was public input, and there were a lot of ideas thrown around, I just like to see what they agree to kind of, what the final product's gonna look like.
Because of the cost measures, it's a very pared back curbs. There will be curbing, they call it a road diet, there will be turning lane as well for into the new YMCA, is that correct?
The last holdup was that, that driveway going in.
Not lane.
The driveway going between the old Y Senior Center, that was a concern because they kind of had the crosswalk in a weird location, which would have required somebody to cross twice to get across the street. So they have to cross the street and then cross the street. So they were gonna move that around, so I'm just curious on how they solved that problem.
Yeah, there, there is one crosswalk remaining, is that correct? So we did a lot of deep dive into mid-block crossing, and if you think about anywhere else in the city, it's really the only place that has a crosswalk mid-block, which is actually can be more dangerous to pedestrians and drivers, because when you're on Jackson Street and I park my car and I'm gonna go over to Bourbon and Burger, I wa, I wait and watch till it's clear and I cross to the store I'm going to. So there, there was a lot of back and forth between public safety, mid-block crossings, and a crosswalk. So we will retain one crosswalk, and we will also, like I said, through the curb cuts, shrink the size of the street, so it does, cars will naturally have to go slower, and it will feel safer to make that mid-block crossing at any of the points across that street, so.
Yeah, that's what I was concerned, because it's been a kind of a hotspot of weird crossing and such, and we've got a lot of complaints out of it.
Yeah, Council President, he rallied, there's no good spot for the crosswalk.
No.
So we think we found the best spot. The other big decision we made from, when you saw those drawings, is we actually are leaving the entrance into the mall lot where it was, which we thought was gonna save us money, hopefully with the project, they're not gonna budget, but apparently it didn't matter that much. So, because we were gonna have to move a fire agent that we literally just put in like a year ago and do some things like that, and we decided to leave that, which then that crosswalk goes to the other side of that entrance. But there really wasn't a great place for a mid-street crosswalk, which is why we really don't have any.
Yeah, the street is slowing down, in fact, and all that, that's what I was concerned about.
There's still a bike lane, there's still the little pull-off area in front of the Senior Center. Really, the only difference is, is what we just talked about, we're glad we get to the final lockup.
Any other questions on that? So are we in consensus to move that to a future business meeting? Make it move. Training use of the old YMCA city fire.
Thank you, Council President, members of council. We are requesting an access agreement to allow city fire to train at the old YMCA before demolition occurs. We'd also like permission to move this to a special business tonight so that the fire department can get in there and start doing some training in a live structure scenario. Josh can answer any of your questions about what training, how, why, I, I'm just moving the papers.
Any questions? Josh, is there still water in the pool at the old Y?
Uh, no, I believe the pool was leaking.
It was totally drained, yeah.
Yeah, I'd like to see before any trainings done or before this agreement's put in effect that a couple people go through and inspect the building so that if something's damaged in the future, it won't be thrown at, we can.
Luckily, they're demolishing it, so we're allowed to damage it.
That's all right.
I thought, the way I read it, I thought it was just doors.
Yeah, they're, I think they're letting us have free rein inside of that. They've taken out everything that they would like.
I thought, I thought the contract just said we can dam, we could damage doors because it was for eager training. I, I just want to be cautious that somebody else can come back and say, "Oh, no, no, George, I'm."
They're gonna demo the building when we're done.
When are they demoing?
Once everything's ready and the demo permit's issued. When the demo permit is issued and they're ready to proceed with that part of the project.
As long as everybody's comfortable, we'll do this.
We have had the sheriffs and police department in there training already, so I'm not sure what kind of shape it's in when you guys get it. And they did it through an agreement with the sheriff's office.
Okay, have they been in there already?
Yeah.
Oh, good, no problem. What do you mean, have the sheriff's office?
Yeah.
Do a water rescue.
So, any other questions? Are we in consensus for the YMCA use, training use to go to tonight's special business?
Yes.
And then for those? Info grant equity?
Yes, thank you, Council President, members of council. As you may be aware, in twenty twenty-two, we had been working with the DEC to look at different measures to reduce either waste or storms who are going into the wastewater treatment plant, and one of the ways to do that is through inflow and infiltration study. We have an opportunity to apply to the EFC for a planning grant to study inflow and infiltration across the city to better determine the effect of stormwater on the sanitary system. I will say, under Scott's leadership, the city has made significant progress in lining our sanitary sewer lines and reducing inflow and infiltration, but we still have a long ways to go in identifying things like sump pumps hooked up directly to the sanitary sewer that should be hooked to storm sewer and things of that nature. So we would like to receive this grant, apply for this grant, and have council also approve the twenty percent match, and that would come out of sewer reserves.
Sounds good. Questions or concerns on that? So are we in consensus to move that through tonight's business meeting for a vote? Make it move. Motion for adjournment?
Go ahead. So we, we did get some attention from the discussion we had on trash pickup, loose trash going around. Casella, Casella is going to require all our customers now to use totes. They're gonna be dropping off totes if your trash isn't in the tote, it won't be picked up. And they had observed and read some articles about our meeting and our concerns, so I think it, some things are moving forward in a positive manner referencing that.
I think we even contacted them, so if they didn't read, we had direct contact with each service trying to find out what they provided and how and why, so that might have started a conversation as well, so.
Good, whatever it takes.
Sometimes just a little talking is better than legislation, new rules and regulations.
Can I ask something?
Yes, go ahead.
So if someone has a cell, they have to call them to give the, no?
They'll be dropping them off. If you don't have a tote, they'll be dropping it off, and I'm sure there'll be a short period of time, and if you don't use it, they won't pick up your trash. They have a pre-recorded call, and it's been going on to customers.
So far, they're the only ones, I guess there's other trash businesses, and I have heard from them, okay.
I think all, the, the other ones already provide a recycling tote.
Waste Management does.
Waste Management does, and.
Schofield has the bright yellow ones.
He has, he has a situation where you bring it to his dump-off area, so you don't leave it at the curb.
But I meant like with Waste Management, you'd have to call, because I know that you have the totes, but not everyone that has Waste Management has a tote, that's why.
That's correct. If you call them, they'll give you one, because I, I went through that a couple years ago by calling them, they just dropped it off.
Okay, okay, thank you.
And it was free of charge, by the way.
I believe we were told by Casella they're changing to trucks that only pick that tote up and dump it in, so that's why it's had to be a tote.
That's correct.
Yeah, they're changing all their trucks now.
So they're upgrading.
But the recyclables, your recyclables to be simple, so the driver will still have to dump those.
Right.
If you don't want a tote, you don't have to have a tote for that.
They'll figure it out, it's their customers, they'll let it know, let them know. So motion to adjourn, Mr. Beely, second to vote, Mr. Richmond, call the roll, please.
Councilmember Beely?
Yes.
Twitchell?
Yes.
Guy?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Richmond?
Yes.
Baikowski?
Yes.
Jankowski?
Yes.
Resolution forty-nine, twenty twenty-five, Mr. Baikowski, please.
Thank you, Council President. I move a resolution to approve the City of Batavia Fire Department to train the vacant YMCA until demolition of the structure.
Second to vote, Mr. Gray. Questions or concerns? Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Beely?
Yes.
Twitchell?
Yes.
Guy?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Richmond?
Yes.
Baikowski?
Yes.
Jankowski?
Yes.
Resolution forty-nine, twenty twenty-five, Mr. Baikowski, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move a resolution to submit an application for the New York State Environmental Facilities Corporation, EFC, wastewater infrastructure engineering planning grant.
Jankowski?
Yes.